He's the man, okay.
I was thinking more like five minutes, Clay, but trying. Anyway, what you have before you is some synopsis of the Plan Bay Area, which is a draft that was prepared by A-BAG, Association of Bay Area Governments, and MTC, or Metropolitan Transportation Commission. It represents a sustainable community strategy and regional transportation plan for the nine-county Bay Area region. The plan was prepared in compliance with the regulations of SB 375, which requires each metropolitan region in the state to develop a sustainable community strategy, or SCS, which includes the following: regional transportation and land use pattern to achieve regional transportation emission reduction targets. And for the Bay Area, that's a 15% per capita reduction by 2035. Identification of areas within the region sufficient to house the entire projected population of the region, including the very low and low economic segments. And the third component is to identify a transportation network to serve the transportation needs of the region. Planning Commission did review this report in some detail at their April 25 meeting, and again, the attachments were presented to them. So I'm just gonna go over the three components of the plan, one being the actual draft Plan Bay Area. And the regional underlying concept is to encourage future growth in areas that already have or will be able to provide a robust transit and promote infill development locations where housing, employment, and daily services can be provided in close proximity to each other. And the three primary growth regions regionally are San Jose, Oakland, and San Francisco, both for housing and employment. And throughout the remainder of the region, much of the development is funneled in what are called PDAs, or priority development areas. These are areas that have been identified by local governments. They actually had to apply to A-BAG to be designated a PDA. And those are all areas that had a commitment to, had access to transit and a commitment to provide more dense housing and/or employment opportunities within those areas. So, again, the intent was that these would be areas that the local governments have identified as suitable and appropriate for that increased intensity of development. And to illustrate the whole philosophy, the PDAs represent about 3% of the total area of the Bay, of the nine-county Bay region. And that 3% of the land will support 77% of the required housing. And 63% of the employment will occur within 3% of the land area. So it is kind of an intensification of land use. And this is paired with another program, an emphasis on conserving regionally important unprotected open space in agriculture through what's called a Priority Conservation Area, or PCA program. So you pair the infill with the idea of protecting some of the green fields and important agricultural resources. So you have this kind of pairing of PDAs and PCA's, sort of an infill and then a protection concept. So that's kind of the underlying premise of the plan. And I think when people talk about sustainability, or SCS, or Sustainable Community Strategy, within the context of this plan, you have to realize it's very limited. You know, the goals and the mandates by state law are only dealing with population, housing, accommodating your population growth, and reducing your emissions associated with transportation or motor vehicles only. It's not a sustainability, environmental sustainability program that has a very broad reach, doesn't get into issues of climate change or sea level rise, or energy conservation or energy generation. It's really not a large context. So that was one of the things, you know, was pointed out in previous iterations of reviewing preliminary versions of this plan, that if this plan didn't exactly address some of these larger environmental sustainability principles, at least perhaps this could be a jumping off point for future planning programs that might take a broader approach to sustainability. Again, this is a plan that is gonna have to be updated regularly every few years. So, you know, the council may wish to consider, if you wanna offer some comments along that regard in terms of the breadth and scope, maybe not of this SCS, which is pretty well locked in in terms of its overall goals, but for other future, longer-term planning that might occur in future cycles. So from a local, so that's kind of the regional perspective. From the local standpoint, the draft plan does project employment and housing down to the local jurisdiction level, as well as within priority development areas. So for Brisbane, our projected housing growth from 2010 to 2040 is 250 residential units for the 30-year cycle. And employment, approximately 1,000 jobs being generated, new jobs over that same 2010 to 2040 period. As you've shown in the table in your staff report, it's broken down by PDA and non-PDA. In our particular case, the PDA relates to the Baylands, which is a designated priority development area as part of the larger by-county area. And there were previous concerns that were raised in previous iterations of the preliminary scenarios that led up to this Plan Bay Area, where A-BAG was attributing substantial either housing or employment growth to the Baylands. Given where the city is in our planning process, being that underway and not really definitive answers in terms of the amount of development that would be accommodated, the city had objected previously to A-BAG attributing particularly housing, which is currently prohibited in the Baylands, onto that PDA. To A-BAG's credit, they did modify the numbers. And so the 250 unit for 2010 to 2040 is consistent with what the council saw last year in terms of our recommendation. So they did take our recommendation for changing that projected growth residentially. And employment, the numbers are really pretty low for all the scenarios that might be under consideration for the Baylands. But our expectation is that whatever land use decisions are made for the Baylands will be rolled into the next update of the SCS in four years. So, either way, you know, if those numbers, especially the employment numbers, if they go up just by a matter of what the council ultimately approves for that property, that'll be reflected in the regional projections. Because, again, the area, the Baylands, is suitable for intensification based on its proximity to transit and other factors. So, you know, there was reason it was included as a PDA originally. We just didn't want any numbers attributed to it until the city actually approved a development project. So another component of the plan is the RTP, or Regional Transportation Plan. Again, it gives a blueprint for how transportation funding through life of the RTP will be spent. That's, you know, regionally is approximately $290 billion over the course of this 30-year plan. About 80% of those funds are committed to dedicated purposes. The remaining amount, about $57 billion, are discretionary. And I think there's a lot of competing interests with those discretionary funds. The RTP seeks to strike a balance between maintaining the existing transportation and transit networks while providing funding for transportation and transit programs, which align with and support the land use patterns set forth in the draft Bay Area plan. And given the limited pool of dollars and the substantial funding needs, both on the maintenance side and for capital improvement, allocation of resources to categories is an ongoing sensitive concern. For example, the RTP includes the One Bay Area Grant Program, or O-BAG program. Again, it's a discretionary competitive funding source. And the funds, through the rules that are promulgated by MTC, require that 70% of those funds, O-BAG funds, be expended in PDAs or in proximity to PDAs, while the remaining 30% are unrestricted. You know, that was adopted about a year ago, I think. Attached some correspondence from the city Public Works Director. And he and his colleagues in the public works field in San Mateo County have been actively involved in this whole commenting on the O-BAG program. And there's an ongoing concern that that balance of funds and the requirement to spend money within the PDAs is starting to reduce the funding available for maintenance, increasing the concern that road quality, road pavement will be in failed conditions over time. It's sort of a trend that's occurring. So you have now even less dollars potentially to deal with these ongoing maintenance concerns. So, there was a previous request that the 70%, 30% split be eliminated in its entirety as a fallback, the recommendation that it be dropped to something more along a 50-50 split, as other counties have, are utilizing elsewhere in the A-BAG region, Marin, Napa, Solano, and Sonoma, all have more of a 50-50 split as opposed to 70-30 with the PDA. Reviewing the RTP, the Planning Commission had a couple comments. They had requested that consideration be given to increasing discretionary funding allocated for climate protection initiatives, and that funding for next-generation transit be reduced. If, again, there's gonna have to be a trade-off of funding. In regard to San Mateo County-specific investments, the Commission expressed concern with prioritizing ferry service out of Redwood City, given that the newly established ferry service at Oyster Point is operating at such a low level. So, some of the programs in San Mateo County that had previously been identified for transportation funding included the Ferry, El Camino, some improvements along El Camino Real, some of our interchange improvements up in the north end of the county. Those were identified as key investments. And probably the key regional sort of priority in San Mateo County was Caltrain electrification. So those were some of the transportation, big-ticket transportation priorities identified for San Mateo County. So the last component of the plan, or not really the plan, but the third component of this, what's under consideration tonight, is the draft environmental impact report that was prepared for this draft Plan Bay Area. And it did attach the executive summary to the Planning Commission report, which is attached in your packet. There are a couple, I think, things when you review that executive summary or the EIR in general. It is a programmatic document. It's cumulatively talking about the impacts of 40 years' worth of employment and housing and population growth, and the cumulative impact of doing a certain suite or a package of transportation or transit improvements. But it's really done at a very gross cumulative level. It doesn't pull out and analyze any given either land use project or transportation or transit project. So it's really a very cumulatively-based document. So when you analyze it, there's not a lot of direct information regarding the environmental impacts to Brisbane that are identified in that draft EIR. So there weren't a lot of real directly applicable sections. I did note that they did, on a county-wide basis, identify potential toxic air contaminant, or TAC, hotspots. And I think I attached an exhibit to your report. And there were a couple that were identified in Brisbane, at the north end of town, northeast corner. I assume they're probably something related to the soil processing or the concrete crushing. But there's no backup data that I could find in the draft EIR. So I'd be recommending that we request additional data as to what the source of these hotspots are and the nature and characteristics of the contaminants that are associated with them. And the third site, I can't tell if it's supposed to be the tank farm or VWR, or what exactly it's supposed to be. So I'd be recommending that the final EIR provide additional information regarding those particular facilities in Brisbane. With that, that really does conclude my comments. I could go into this at much more extensive length like the Planning Commission was subjected to, but I'd be glad to cut it off here and open it up for questions. The goal really here is for you to provide direction to me as to what comments you would like to forward to A-BAG and MTC on this document and plan. And that concludes my comments.
Okay, thank you. Alex.
I have a few to start with.
Yeah, I'll go after Clark.
Okay, you want Clark to go first?
All right, I could go, whatever.
Yeah, all right.
Go ahead. Cliff, go for it.
Okay. Let me start with you, Randy. So, you know, regarding the, yeah, regarding the funding for, you know, road improvements and things like that. So I saw your letter in regards to the fix-it-first. There with the O-BAG funding, they're putting 70% into these PDAs and 30% is for everybody else. But yet, as John had mentioned, only 3% of the land in San Mateo County is in PDA. So, you know, just going through the document, it seemed, and they mentioned the fix-it-first, but it seems to contradict, you know, what was approved before and then what they're trying to propose now. So if you could shine some light on that.
You said it very eloquently, sir. It completely contradicts what they've committed to previously, that they were gonna fix it first. And frankly, it comes down to social planning via control of purse strings. They are trying to decide that everyone should and shall live in a PDA. So they are directing the money be there at the expense of existing infrastructure.
So, you know, in the staff report, I talked about the different counties that have gone to the 50-50. But those counties are in part of the MTC.
That's correct, sir.
Right, so this is a San Mateo County proposal. So it's an MTC thing.
It's an MTC thing. We're part of the same nine-county Bay Area group. It falls under MTC. It's just that they treat their children to the north differently than their children to the south.
Oh, really?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Okay, well, that's, that's the new one. I just, I thought that was a San Mateo County thing, and that we were just kind of toeing the line. And, you know, the other counties were breaking ranks and doing something that is more appropriate. But they have different guidelines for different counties.
Yes, sir, that's absolutely correct.
And how do they get away with that?
Sorry, I think you'd have to ask the elected representatives.
If you'll mind an interjection, Cliff, I think this is really politics. In fact, it's all politics. And the reason that, you know, the PDAs get these high percentages, did you notice where all the PDAs are and where all the stuff is?
Yeah, three big cities.
San Jose, Oakland, and San Francisco. There's your political power. And that's why it's 70% gone to those places.
Yeah, yeah. You know, at the CMAC meeting that I attended last Thursday, so we were to approve, you know, giving our feedback to CCG. And part of the meeting, we looked at the cities who got the O-BAG funding. And, you know, of course, in John's staff report, it talks about where the, you know, you have to be in a PDA or close proximity. And so I asked Sandy Wong, so what does close proximity mean? And she says, "Well, you know, I haven't really defined it, but most of the money," and talking about a million dollars a pop, "was, you know, went to close proximity projects." They weren't in the PDAs. So, you know, so of course, I'm thinking of Brisbane. We have our PDA, and we have close proximity, which is Bay Shore. You know, what opportunities could there be for us to, you know, capture some of those transportation dollars? And so, you know, as we go into the next cycle, I think it would be really good for us to understand how do we play the game and put forth our plans. But of course, you gotta have a plan. You have to have something that, you know, is shovel-ready. And, but it would be good to know, you know, how we could obtain those funds and then plan accordingly.
And I think just as importantly, sir, in those areas, is that when you have a PDA that has some existing development in it and it's got a plan to be developed further, that's great. But when you have a PDA that really is barren, like our PDA is right now, that's a really tough sell that, you know, we're providing better access to Bayland soil processing.
You know, you're right. But, you know, I asked, one of the questions I asked was, well, you know, how many of these proposals were turned down? Very few. And where they, you know, the amount that they asked for, they got a lesser amount. But, you know, it's, you know, our PDA is unique in that, you know, it's designated a suburban area. Whereas the other ones are town centers or mixed use.
You're on the ground, all of a sudden.
Right, so they're a little bit further ahead, like Randy has said. But, so doesn't mean, you know, I think there are still opportunities, you know, for us to just, you know, we gotta get together and figure out.
Well, I concur with what you say, Cliff. I mean, that was something, you know, I wanted to talk about too. So, I mean, I'm glad you hit on it, so don't have to waste a word with that.
Yeah, yeah. Well, you know, maybe, you know, when we do the charade and we look at Crocker Park and we look along Bay Shore, you know, maybe there is, you know, some opportunities for us to tap into some kind of, you know, transportation funding that helps promote that economic development in the areas that we want to see. You know, that could potentially, you know, have an impact now rather than waiting, you know, decades, perhaps, you know, with the Baylands. Or maybe there's part of the Baylands that, you know, could potentially be developed too.
Well, sir, I think in conversation with the Planning Director, part of it would be, certainly be beneficial if we could extend that PDA across Bay Shore. Because then it would, and if we get it to touch some of the areas you're talking about, then we have very viable applications.
Mm-hmm, yeah, definitely.
That's a good point.
All right, yes. Oh, well, you know, it was interesting, you know, I'm glad you brought up the thing about sustainability, John, because, you know, sometimes when people talk about sustainability, they're so focused on the environment. Here, in regard to sustainability, they're talking about housing, you know, and transit-oriented, you know, projects. And, yeah, it would be nice to have a more balanced sustainability perspective, you know, moving forward, you know, with the SCS. So I, I mean, if there's a way that we can, I think, share that sentiment in, when you provide our feedback, that would be great.
Yeah, and there's a second part to it, I think, you know, with, if I may, Cliff, if you'd be done. That, John, when they had that meeting, you were there a couple of years back when we had it down there at the Samtrans building. And I had asked about sea level rise. And the guy basically said it was hyperbole. But now, but now he remembers that, and now they've kind of addressed that and acknowledged it, you know, which is good. I mean, that's a good movement, you know. But there's some serious holes in this. And one of the things, and they talk about 75% of the new jobs forecast are professional services, health, education, leisure, and hospitality. Well, 70% of those are leisure and hospitality, okay? And they had given this presentation to us at CCG, our last, last meeting last month, you know, and they indicated that. And these aren't what I'd call living wage jobs. These are more, you know, I mean, service like Starbucks and stuff like that. And so when you have these mixed-use, right, sustainable communities, where they're creating these jobs, but they're not the ones that are buying the houses, okay? So it's not like they're living on site and walk downstairs and work there. And that, you know, and that's the problem like with Schleich Lock. And people talk about that, but they never acknowledge, and it took a while to pull that out of somebody, that this is, there's a real big missing piece here.
There's a big disconnect.
Yeah.
You're right.
And this is where we need to address them in our letter, because if we're looking at this as regional, the whole Bay Area region, well, then we're a subregion. And our subregion is north San Francisco, or south part of San Francisco, the east part of San Francisco. I'm talking about Candlestick Point and the west part of Daly City, or the east part of Daly City. And there is a lot more mixed use, but a lot of housing, but not high-end jobs. And we really kind of have identified the Baylands, even though we don't have a specific plan that says so, through the years, we have said that we identify it as kind of a high-end job area.
More tech, more...
Right. And so from a regional sense, as we're providing that high-end job that people who move in those houses would really be in the proximity. Because these mixed uses, the people that live there, unless you're a college-age kid or a retired person or something like that that's gonna supplement their income, will go from upstairs to downstairs to work. But the majority of them are not. And that's where the disconnect is. Because all this stuff is, to me, is the acronym starts with a B and S. You know what I mean? It goes around, you understand what I'm saying? And so our letter, our letter needs to address our subregion on how it affects with Brisbane and how that ties together, I think, with the housing in the Schleich Lock area, the potential housing in Candlestick area, potential housing in the Daly City area, and how that would tie into the Brisbane area for the high-end jobs. And that's where the transportation hub is.
Now, the PDA that we're in, though, it's a, we share that with San Francisco.
Right, yes.
So, I mean, that...
Yeah, but I'm saying that that needs to be acknowledged. It really needs to be acknowledged, you know, because when they're looking at it, they did acknowledge that, you know, that 70% of these jobs, you know, are low-wage jobs. And so all the housing that they're talking about is not affordable housing. And, you know, affordable housing has many different, you know, venues of it. And I think we're gonna get a presentation in a couple weeks for that. You know, it doesn't mean it's Section 8 housing and stuff like that. But if 70% of the jobs are low-end jobs, 70% of the housing is not gonna be. You know, I mean, what, you know what I mean? The ratio there is, how is that all gonna work? You know, who's what? And I don't quite understand those figures. And I think that we just need to acknowledge from our perspective on how this is gonna fit. Because I think the important part is that Geneva Avenue Extension that is gonna be able to provide that corridor. Because as you said, Cliff, that San Francisco wants to move it up to Schleich Lock, the train station. And they just, you know, wanna deal with Rome and forget about south of Rome.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, and then they wanna use that little road that goes through Little Hollywood. But you can't expand the road as their rapid bus, I mean, goofy. And so I think our letter should really acknowledge what we have and also cut it off at the pass right now. That Geneva Avenue Extension to Bart would really be key if Lennar is gonna develop out of Candlestick or whoever, and how all this ties together with these high-end jobs. Whether people come from the East Bay or, you know, Millbrae via Bart or whatever, or the Caltrain, you know. And I think electrification of Caltrain really is important for the whole thing. And having said all that, what are you gonna build? A giant seawall if this, you know, sea level really is? I mean, I try and put that concept, and I'm sure, Randy, you, you know, being an engineer, you roll around with that. It's like, how is this gonna work? You know, I mean, when you have a break in the dike... You know, I mean, when you have a break in the dike, who's going to be the dyke boy, you know? Going to stick his finger in it, you know, I mean, it's, it's, it's kind of scary.
My interjection.
Yeah.
Uh, Clay and I were at a legend meeting and the speaker was from the Skidmore Owens and Merrill, I guess, uh, and a big architectural firm. And they had an internal competition, asking the question, so how are we going to deal with sea level rise around the Bay Area? I mean, you've got to build hundreds and hundreds of miles of dikes in order to, if you're going to do all the way around the bay, you know? And so the solution was, you've got to build something at the Golden Gate. And that was what won the prize. So, you know, there you at least have a certain.
Fighting chance.
The technical demands with that are incredible. But it's certainly a lot less trying to build dikes around the entire Bay Area.
Yeah, I've thought about that too, but then what do you do to the economy on the shipping and everything? I mean, it's gone anyway, so, yeah, interesting. But anyway, that's, that's my feedback.
Okay.
I think, I don't know, John, if that kind of, were you able to?
Yeah, I guess I'm trying to take, well, I think there's some pretty fine-grained, I think, very legitimate fine-grained issues that in this broader plan, I'm not, I'm trying to kind of figure out how to get them in there in a meaningful way. Uh, that's what I'm sort of mulling around right now. Uh, I think the one problem that you hit on is the fact that, you know, we're unique and that everything's done by county. That's how they extrapolate data and do projections. And you're right, we're in this kind of amorphous edge where we have maybe more in common with San Francisco, southeast San Francisco in terms of land use and everything than we do with cities halfway down the peninsula.
Right.
But, you know, for statistically, we're part of that peninsula kind of, kind of number of data set, you know, we're that data set. So the idea of kind of integrating that into some of the planning and recognizing that might be useful. You know, I can make that comment. I think we've done that to some extent by having a bi-county PDA and not creating an artificial PDA line and having one PDA here and another PDA there. Uh, but I think your point in terms of making sure it's kind of always considered sort of within that context of in, uh, by, whatever, subregion. Yeah, that's unique and kind of puts the, keeps the door open, keeps our foot in the door for as certain things play out in the future, that we have that on record. So I think we can work with that sort of language. I think the numbers, the idea, I think, the numbers are real different, how they generated them, because they're not really based on cities' general plan-type projections. So the idea that kind of we put the baylands aside in terms of the, the kind of employment numbers to wait for our planning process to play out. I don't know, trying to put numbers on, on employment, bumping them up from what, you know, we have now, I'm not sure that's a strategy that's going to work out for us very well at this point. But, or that you're not getting the worry about the job projections, I think they're just too low. I don't know if you're getting at that, Clark, or, or not. Are you okay kind of holding that in, in limbo until the baylands plays out?
I'm okay, um, sorry, I'd be okay with holding that, certainly holding that out, uh, because I know four years from now, this is going to be a redo type thing. They're going to update it. And this is the first cut at it.
Yeah.
You know, so certainly, you know, it's not like, you know, this stuff is going to happen. But I think this is the foundational thing. And I think that that acknowledgement of us being in this unique subregion and bi-county, you know, situation really needs to, you know, we really need to set that in the foundation. And, uh, and my colleagues agree with that. I'm not hearing anybody say anything to the contrary, so.
Um. Yeah, there, there was a phrase actually used in the material here that this was supposed to be an integrated planned bi-county PDA. And it doesn't sound like San Francisco is thinking much in an integrated way in what Cliff has reported and what we've heard. So, I mean, that's something we can start from.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think there's a whole.
It's not happening.
Yeah, there's a whole separate conversation with San Francisco and how, how is a partner in this, uh, planning and leveraging for transportation dollars? That's, that's, again, at a much finer grain than this document is going to really be able to resolve. But it helps get it on the record and then we use that maybe to kickstart some conversation. That's, that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know what I'll do is I'll, I'll forward all of you the, um, the study, or the bi, I guess, the bi-county study or transportation study, I don't know the exact name of it, but it was.
It is bi-county, I think.
Okay, yeah, so, um, I forgot his first name, his last name is Fong. Or I think he's part of the transportation.
Chester Fong, sir.
Chester Fong, okay, yeah. So he, he's the one that presented to the CMA committee that, um, you know, the, the results of the study and, and where.
He's been here before.
He has, yeah, he is very familiar, yeah, so, um.
Different presentation.
And, and in his presentation, they, they showed where the, where the multimodal station was, where they have, where they're proposing to locate it, which is butt upright against Slade Lock. And in all their slides, they never showed ecology, where the ecology expansion, which was really bizarre. You know, so, uh, you know, they were talking, you know, the sustainability, you know, mantra and, but when, when we, then when he and I got into conversation about ecology and it is like, oh, yeah, that's going to be an issue. Because it, it kind of goes against the grain of, of, you know, having the multimodal station and having, you know, I, I, you know, talked about a quarter-mile radius. He was talking about a half-mile radius of, of, of a variety of uses. But with ecology, I mean, you, you know, half of the site is going to be just this one use. And it really doesn't make sense. You know, they talked about trying to, you know, get the private sector involved with, you know, trying to, to build these transportation things. And, um, you know, how do you get the private sector involved if, um, if you have it tucked away in an area where the footprint is very small and you're limiting the uses of your multimodal station? You know, whereas if it's further south and you have a larger footprint, now you can, you can add things to the multimodal station, like a hotel or a shopping mall or, you know, other uses that then, you know, part of your infrastructure is built by the private sector. So he acknowledged that, yeah, okay, that, that's a flaw by moving the straight, the station north too, so. But, yeah, I mean, uh, you know, it was weird. It was like, here is this, this plan and they were talking about like there was this joint collaboration. And fifty percent of that study was funded by San Mateo County. Yeah, it, it was definitely the whole San Francisco leaning, which was, yeah.
Rome.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not too pleased by that. But, you know, I, I think we'll, I think we'll be able to address that, that, those issues, hopefully, in, you know, at a later date.
Jerry?
I think you guys have, you know, covered a lot of the concerns I have. Um, my big thing on this is that if you have, um, wage-producing jobs and homes in an area, um, if you change jobs, you're not going to move, because you've made your home there. And so the whole work-live, um, concept is a little disjointed in, in this era where people change jobs fairly regularly and, you know, you don't have that commitment to twenty-five years with a company like you do with your home. And the thought of, of giving us the Geneva extension where we have a roadway going through and moving the multimodal station doesn't make sense to me. Um, you know, it gives us the, the road-traffic intersection and it gives someone else the, um, transportation opportunities. So it's something I think we should let them know. We don't want to shift or it's not a good idea that we are, um, in a different situation than, than other areas that may benefit from jobs and, and working in the same location. And that we should concentrate on the jobs, which is what we should be good at or what we should have a good availability for. So, um, I think your comments are all good if we can find a way to implement them into the responses.
I did want to clarify, though, that there's nothing in this plan, in the draft plan Bay Area or the RTP that contemplates shifting, like, there's no, that's not a project that's funded anywhere as a part of the RTP. So, again, I think it's part of a finer-grain conversation with San Francisco. I hate to bring up something that isn't commenting on something that's not.
I, I, I agree with that. I, but I, I think that somehow if we can get it, um, inputted that we are a, uh, an oddity when it comes to being across, across jurisdiction lines when it comes to the PDA. Um, I think that's more to the point of it.
Or maybe we can say something to the effect that if you're going to give any money to this bi-county PDA, there ought to be equal decision-making roles in determining, you know, what the projects are for. And that each side maybe should have some kind of ability to dissent, maybe even to the point of close-to-veto power. I don't know how to set it up, but, but it ought to be a mutual decision-making process, you know, not just something that, that San Francisco controls. Somehow say that in terms of eventual allocation of funds. I don't, probably need an attorney to, to get the language right, but, but I think that, you know, that principle certainly should be enunciated.
You know, Mr. Mayor, I think that's a, that's a great conversation because it's really one of the things that the bi-county study has tried to do with, with the projects that the council member Lentz was bringing in. And that's why that conversation was started back in nineteen ninety-nine. But that's really the most difficult part of it, is because technicians have sat down for over a decade now and they've kind of have a handle on what the projects are and what the dollar amount is. And, and I was working on that for a separate item as we were talking here earlier and just for the interim solution, the three or four hundred million, the first piece of the bi-county study transportation improvements. The way that the financial share breaks out for is really San Francisco's background growth and innovative development is sixty percent. The responsibility of Brisbane's is thirty percent, Daly City's is ten percent. But you can't make decisions on projects on whether to build one or not based on those percentages. And it's really hard to tease out of there, well, your project and your citizens go there and my projects and my citizens, we all use this together. So making the right decisions has been a challenge. That's why, right now, the city of Brisbane is the project sponsor for doing the project study report for Candlestick Interchange. Really, no one else wanted to step up and do it at the time. And really, we need to make sure that we protected our interest as well. So I, I think your point is really well taken, sir.
I have a couple other points that my colleagues, for the time being. Um, I also, you, you mentioned the priority conservation areas, John. And, uh, I know you said that one of the criteria is to protect areas from being developed that might otherwise come under pressure for doing so. But I was trying to think, maybe we could be, and that probably would not include therefore the habitat conservation area on San Bruno Mountain, because that's probably not going to be threatened in the near term anyway. Uh, but it, it does strike me that they are trying to make a relationship between the PDAs and the PCAs, see if they can juxtapose and the funding and the thinking and so forth. And maybe we could be a little bit creative and think about, I don't know, maybe some other kind of places, I don't know, the Eleventh and Estates or Bay Trail or, or something or other anyway. Uh, because they have an open period of application now?
Yeah, there's, um, actually, I think, a, a meeting coming up that's for grant or opening, you know, that's coming up sometime later this month, so we can certainly look into that. Um, we've had some preliminary conversation, the idea of juxtaposing the, the baylands PDA and the PCA. And I was thinking more in terms of, you know, if there's going to be connectivity from the bay eventually across the baylands and, you know, or would there be opportunities to, to leverage outside financing for open space improvements or habitat restoration.
Right.
That would create a corridor.
Right.
And I don't think we should be penalized for foresight, the city's foresight of actually protecting lands already and investing their own funds and now, in a sense, you're not, you get penalized because you're not eligible because you already protected these lands. And so now you're somehow cut out of the funding source seems a little counterintuitive.
Anyway, a little creativity there and I'm glad to know that you're thinking of probably sending someone to those meetings. And I don't know whether it's appropriate to get the planning commissioner or the Open Space and Ecology Committee to weigh in on that, because it does take a little creativity, like you were just mentioning, as to what we could blackboard. But it seems to me that, that this is the opportunity we ought to, we ought to try it.
Yeah, but, but there's, there's other cycles though, too, of, of getting.
It just happens to be open now.
Yeah.
And they closed it for a couple of years then, yeah, right. So now it's kind of a chance.
Put your foot in the door.
Yeah, exactly. Um, another, and so I'm kind of going, thinking of things in reference to what we can do and also how we can respond in our letter, which you don't want to be too long, because then nobody will read it. Um, but we keep talking about the electrification of Caltrain and if you, you know, look at their top ten projects, I mean, Caltrain is two of them. And you mentioned it, Clark, and yet you read again in the paper this morning that, you know, Caltrain is endangered species. It doesn't have any regular funding source. Uh, and yet it's getting more and more popular, it's used very extensively, and yet it doesn't have any sound financial base. And I think we ought to weigh in on that again and again, you know. I mean, that's, it's a serious problem. Uh, and people keep thinking about, oh, then the rail transit great or the rail hub great or, you know, the rail and transit and housing and it's supposed to rail goes away, you know? That's another kind of, another part of the picture.
Some, some of our colleagues in the South Bay may wish that instead of electrification, that it goes to natural gas.
Yeah, well, I don't know. But the, but that's a question of, you know, what's the most sensible way to move in technology? But, but that still doesn't deal with the issue of funding for the whole damn thing.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, structural deficit that it has.
Yeah, that's right, exactly. So anyway, um, you know, when we write this letter, we can certainly thank them for, you know, recognizing our planning processes, as you pointed out. I like the question, okay, so where does your air quality data come from? Um, the one thing that I've been talking about all along, which is sort of mentioned in the extended comments on the Open Space and Ecology Committee that you have included here, uh, but it isn't as explicitly stated as I would like it to be. Because what they really have in their targets and in their measures is a flat-out contradiction. Because, and that's what we need to say. Because they say on the one hand that we want to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Okay, great, that's climate change, et cetera, pollution. But on the other hand, one of the measures of success is increase in the regional gross domestic product. And what does a regional gross domestic product measure? The more greenhouse gas emissions you create, the higher your GDP. There's a total contradiction. Uh, and so, you know, there is some language that Stuart notes that Lisa put together about how the GDP is a problem and the way it's measured and what's included and how there are alternatives. And, and the organization that's come up with an alternative is actually based in Oakland. You know, right down, it's probably right down the street from MTC and ABAG. Uh, and, you know, they measure things differently and they take into account, uh, you know, pollution is not a positive. Pollution is a negative, you know. People getting killed is not a positive, it's a negative. You know, I mean, you got to, and, and the Bay Area Council actually supported, um, you know, doing a regional, I think it was called a genuine progress indicator, which was supported by the Bay Area Council. And for sure, ABAG and MTC knows about that. So why are they using the regional GDP? I mean, it's, it's just a total contradiction. So, anyway, I hope we would say it and say it a lot more stritely rather than we sort of hit it, you know. Uh, even though we said it, we didn't really say, this is a flat-out contradiction that you measure you want to use totally contradicts the thing you say you really want to achieve, which is reduction in greenhouse gas emissions. Yeah, I really agree with, with, when you were talking about the whole, uh, who's gonna afford the housing, you know? Everybody's always talking about, "Oh, the city should provide affordable," ah, well, the basic problem is people don't make enough money. That's the problem, and that's because we get greater and greater income inequality, like you were talking about. You got all these people who are making these, you know, minimum wages, they can't afford the housing. They're never gonna be able to afford the housing. The problem is the whole way in which our income structure has moved over the last couple of decades, and it's not the whole problem, but it's a hell of a big part of it, uh, and that should be a part of the, of the equity measures, you know? So what are we doing to improve the distribution of income? You know, nobody talks about that. But affordability comes down to what kind of income you have in the first place.
Yeah, you know, uh, Ray, it was, in, in, you'll see at the presentation, it was quite interesting, um, in one of the videos that they showed, where there was this couple, and the, the, the wife, she was a Stanford graduate, and here's a Stanford graduate that isn't making enough money with her husband to afford a house, and, and I think, you know, it's, you know, like, like Clark alluded to, I mean, it, affordable housing isn't just, you know, the, the Section Eight type, type housing, it's, you know, it's housing for, you know, our sons and daughters, uh, you know, people who have, you know, they, you know, they, they, they go to college and, and, you know, they, they wanna become a teacher, or they, they, they want to, um, you know, work in the nonprofit sector, 'cause they wanna give back, they, you know, they, they wanna have a job that is enriching for them, but they also wanna be able to afford to live here, too, and, and so, you know, um, you know, and that's, I mean, I think that's something that, that eventually, you know, we'll have the conversation about, you know, w- w- with the Baylands, you know, and, and, uh, you know, are there, you know, will there be, you know, some kind of criteria for us, you know, as far as, you know, providing real affordable housing, you know, and, and, you know, yeah, we're, we're not close to having that conversation yet, but-
I think living wage is a smarter, smarter conversation to have.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
No, you know, it's all part of it, you know, and we all have to take responsibility, too, and so, um, you know, and maybe there's areas in, you know, not including the Baylands, but here in central Brisbane, too, you know, when we, when we have that charrette, you know, I mean, who knows what will bubble out from the conversations that we have with the community. Um, but, you know, it, it, you know, with, with, uh, you know, with Ray and I being on that, 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 that committee that's looking at the survey, and trying to get that information from the community, I mean, that's, that's, you know, that, that's something that, you know, that's really important, that will help steer the direction of, of what we eventually do, not, you know, not just with the Baylands course, but then also, you know, with the charrette here, so.
I think our presentation that we're gonna get from Matthew Franklin, I think it's in two weeks, is that, is that right, from Mid Peninsula Housing, is gonna be really educational on, uh-
Yes.
-uh, folks that, you know, were, you know, use the hor- affordable housing, 'cause most of them are employed, but it comes down to that wage thing, you know, and so, that there's just not enough there, I mean, these are people that work in your community, you know, and that's, that's really the key, and that's a, a real sustainability component.
Absolutely. Yeah, and then finally, uh, I agree with John, what you said, colleagues said, Planning Commissioner said, uh, is that, you know, their sense of sustainability is way too narrow. We know that's not gonna change in, um, you know, in this particular go-around, but we certainly can bring it to their attention.
For next law.
They're just not looking at a, a broader swath of, of the components of sustainability, we're just looking at a narrow part of it, and so they need to have a prior, and, you know, if they're interested in actually meeting the objectives of A-Bag, too, if you really wanna reduce greenhouse gas emissions, I mean, buildings are a big part of that, you know, not only transportation, but also buildings, uh, and so all of that's gotta be thought about if they, if they really wanna achieve these objectives.
Yeah.
So I think we need to bring that up again as well. And the only other thing I would say is that the letter has to be kind of, you know, the, the Open Space and Ecology thing, as I look back on it, was just too discursive, too narrative, you know, not, not an effective, uh, polemic by any means, uh, so we need to have a letter that has boom, 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 you know, really hits the points that, that somebody will actually, if they read, uh, it might strike them a little. Uh, if it, if it's too muddy, then they're, they're not gonna pay much attention. Charles?
I think one thing we haven't really discussed is business itself. I mean, business, they're talking about having the, um, people living where the, the jobs are, but jobs, what does that mean? I mean, jobs, the companies move, so, you know, they may build a building, but a couple of years from that point, they may decide to relocate somewhere else. So, you know, the, the whole premise is just, I, I don't understand the whole premise. I ca- I can't even envision the whole premise, because, you know, I'm almost all seen that.
Yeah, right.
You know, one day the company's here, the next day the company has-
Right.
-renegotiated and moves elsewhere.
The most recent example we have, of course, is VWR, yeah, but we also have Boise Cascade was another example, a very big employer, and they just decided to move, and there were a lot of people living in Brisbane who worked there, and that was fine, except that-
The company was-
Now they gotta go to Menlo Park.
Right.
Yeah, right.
Or Idaho.
Or wherever, yeah.
Or Texas.
Yeah.
Or Korea.
Yeah.
You know, it, it's, uh, so, you know, I think the whole premise, the whole premise is, is weird. I, I have a question, it, my husband pointed out that it looks like Marin County is not part of this, A-Bag, is that true?
No, no, they are.
They are, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
The percentage they're supposed to take is pretty small, as I noticed, is that right, John? Yeah.
That's correct.
I just want a clarification, thank you.
Okay, sure, thank you.
Is that because they just know they won't be affordable?
They're probably, yeah. Yeah. Uh, so, um, do you have enough?
It's a good start, and I'll work with the mayor and the city manager to punch this form that captures the essence of tonight's conversation.
Okay, great.
Yeah, sounds good.
So, thank you very much.
That was easy.
Thank you, Clark.
Yeah, listen to that.
Okay, now, we have a bunch of small stuff, but do you wanna have a motion to continue the meeting?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to continue at ten forty-five.
Okay, it's our second?
I'll second.
Okay, if you say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
I thought I was gonna die for lack of emotion. Adjourned, Clay.
Okay, so, um, we want to send your managers a report, budget calendar. Budget calendar, yeah.
What we're looking at doing is having a meeting on May twenty-eighth, which would be the overview of the overall budget, and then the topic of discussing the parks recreation and the marina issue, of splitting that. Um, I'd like to do that on the twenty-eighth, 'cause that would give us enough time to make any changes to the budget, if there's a policy decision change on what we're doing. We would then, um, based on other issues that are going on at the June third meeting, depending on how crowded that's, that, 'cause that's a regular council meeting, how crowded that council meeting is, have some departments give presentations, and I, I would like to wait to see more closer to what the agenda is, to determine what kind, which departments might fit best with that. If there's a lot of items on the agenda, what I might suggest is that we have some of the quicker departments go that evening, and then on the June tenth, have another meeting.
It was June third, right?
June third, right, but as I said, I, before I really, before we really schedule which departments, let's see what the gen- agenda looks like, and then on June tenth, finish up with the department meetings, um, have a general discussion if there's any changes that need to be made, and then bring back a budget for approval on June seventeenth. That's the, my current thought.
How's it sounding, everybody?
We have some meetings we gotta do.
All good?
Looks good with my calendar so far.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, great.
Yeah, and you'll, you'll email that to all of us, uh, that, that, that schedule. Okay, thanks.
Okay. Um, next item?
Okay, the next item is that we've, uh, been asked by, um, the Office of Senator Jerry Hill to be a co-sponsor, um, of an event that he is gonna be doing on May fifteenth. It's a public event, uh, for an opportunity to educate and receive feedback on the legislative process. Um, the discussion will be facilitated, it will feature an overview of the state's spending priorities, followed by an interactive, audience-driven discussion on the state budget. Um, the only downside, I suppose, is that it's, um, held at Foothill College, um, in Los Angeles Hills, so it's a little bit of a trek for people from, uh, Brisbane, but we will advertise it on our website, and, um, I think, uh, most of the cities in San, most of the cities in Senator Hill's district probably will be co-sponsors to it.
Okay. So, both we have a Sustainability Committee meeting on that evening, right, on fifteen?
Okay.
The third?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I know Clark and I've got a meeting in the JPA L- ALS that evening also.
Same evening, huh? Okay.
That's in San Mateo or San Carlos, which-
I'm not sure, I'll have to find out.
So, would, would you, uh, Clay, like to just bring us up to date on, uh, renewal of the HCP?
Um, yes, except I didn't bring that with me, but that has been-
You want it?
Okay. What the mayor's referring to is that on Monday, the county, which was today, right, um, the mon- uh, the county, uh, put out a, um, press release indicating that the, um, Habitat Conservation Plan for San Bruno Mountain has, um, now been extended by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service for another thirty years, um, and it was originally a thirty-year, um, HCP in nineteen eighty-three. Um, it was based on the Federal Endangered Species Act of nineteen seventy-three, and, um, it, um, puts back into place the, um, basic process of the HCP. I think, as you know, um, we've been working with, um, the, um, Technical Advisory Committee, uh, to look at reviewing some of the, um, techniques and plans of the HCP. Uh, we've gotten a little bit of pushback from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service in terms of using some of the HCP monies for that, um, but the idea was to kind of take a, a fresh look at some of the practices and, um, whether or not that's what we wanna do going into the future. Um, the other kind of big piece in all this, um, it's not necessarily part of the, the renewal, but as you know, um, through Brisbane, we've been able to generate a significant amount of money that will be going into the HCP in the next couple of years, um, as the northeast ridge builds out, and a trust fund is set up, as well as additional fees for the new homes up there, and that's, uh, if my memory serves me correct, that was gonna about triple the budget, triple the annual budget of the HCP, and provide a little bit more resources for being able to battle the invasives up there, and to do various sorts of pilot projects, and try to hopefully get a little bit more on top of, um, of the habitat up there for the, uh, for the endangered species.
And mainly that was to, uh, control the invasive spe- invasive plant species, mainly-
Right.
Uh, the coyote scrub, or something like that.
Coyote bush.
Um, I think wha- wha- whatever invasive, invasive plants are, you know, 'cause that's kinda changed over the years, and-
Yeah, the one was actually a native plant that was the most invasive, huh, that's the coyote.
Yeah, it's a coyote bush, yeah.
Scrub.
Well, it's, it's cyclical, so the coyote bush has, has brushed and taken over the grasslands, because fire's been removed from the, from the mix, for the most part, and it really needs to be controlled.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, as I noticed in one of the press releases, one of the protected species is gone, and we don't have it anymore, so even though it's listed as a protected species, um, on the HCP, that, that butterfly is gone.
Which one, which one's that?
Um-
Monarch?
No, I'd have to look at-
The Checker Spot, right?
Yeah.
Well, the, we, we have the Mission Blue, the San Bruno Elephant, and the Bay Checker Spot, so it's the-
Yeah, the Bay Checker Spot hasn't been seen for quite a while.
Kalipi Silver.
On several, yeah, still exists elsewhere.
Similar.
Okay, subcommittee reports. I've got three here, Economic Development, Facilities, and Solid Waste.
Can I talk about economic development, Clark?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Okay, well, we had, um, yeah, we talked a little bit about this, uh, let's see, so we, we were approached by, um, Chief Panachi regarding the forty-fifth anniversary of the bullet movie, um, being filmed in Brisbane, and, uh, we had tried to coordinate, you know, perhaps doing an event in Brisbane, uh, to mark that anniversary. Uh, at the time of our, our meeting, it, it appeared that it wasn't gonna happen. They had already made plans somewhere else, and, and, um, it didn't look like it was gonna happen, and then I got a call from the chief on Friday night, and he said, "Hey, uh, we still wanna do something with you guys, and, um, I'm gonna put you in touch with this guy," I forgot his name, Paul.
Paul.
Paul. Anyway, so, uh-
From the planning center.
Yeah, so, we talked, and he, he said, "Yeah, no, we, we wanna come to Brisbane, and we wanna do something the Friday night before the event, which is on Saturday," and they're gonna do it, I think, at, in, uh, in, uh, Black, Black Hawk, perhaps, and I think something in San Francisco, too, but they wanted to do an event in, in, in Brisbane, and Clark and I were thinking of perhaps tying it with, uh, as a fundraiser, save for the skateboard park, you know, with the mog, and, uh, the Lions Club, perhaps doing a barbecue, and, and showing the movie, and, um, Mitch Bull had, uh, reserved the Mission Blue Center for that night. I don't know if it's still reserved, did, did you, did check?
What, what, what night is this? You're just giving us Friday.
It's in June.
It's in June.
June twenty-fifth, or something like that.
Something like that, whatever the Friday night is that. Yeah, so, I mean, that's about where we are right now. We haven't worked on any of the, any of the potential details of, you know, they might do like a car show, and-
Might be fun to do something in, I mean, I don't know if the community park's available, but, you know, you could do a, a scre- uh, we've, I've screened the movie before for, um, I don't watch, actually, um, we've, we've done a, where people sit around and you can see when it's like, "Oh, going up Guadalupe, going down Guadalupe," um, and it's very entertaining to watch and, and get the historical reference, so, um, but you, perhaps screening it in the park, or-
Yeah, that would be a, that we thought, too, uh, you know, perhaps closing off San Francisco, like we did for the Zippy event, and doing some kind of thing like that, and, and, and they're expecting, I think, between seventy-five and a hundred people, and, um, you know, maybe, you know, if it was catered and we, like, through the Lions Club, they're interested in doing burgers and hot dogs and stuff like that, and making a more, um, cool thing, and, so, um, we'll see, we'll see if, you know, something can come, come about from that.
It's very fluid right now.
It's definitely very fluid, but they, you know, as you s- you know, I saw from that email, Clark, that, um, he seems pretty motivated to-
Yeah.
-do something in Brisbane, which-
Yeah, which, which is counter from what we've heard previously, so.
Yes, yeah, yeah, we were hoping that they would, um, book their rooms at the Radisson instead of in South City, you know, but, um-
In Brisbane, huh?
Yeah, I, as I say, yeah, I said, we were hoping that they would book at the Radisson, but instead they, they wound up doing it in, in South City, and then they already said they, they weren't gonna change, but, you know, perhaps if we get something going, make it a regular thing, and, um, you know, who knows, it might grow.
And what anniversary is the bullet?
Forty-fifth. Forty-fifth, yeah.
Nineteen sixty-eight.
What else did we talk about with economic development, uh?
So, when are you guys gonna give us your report?
That's what we were talking about.
August.
Sorry.
Okay.
It moved out to August, right, Clay? Uh-huh.
Yeah, yeah. So, we were, you know, uh, yeah, so, we, we, basically, the last meeting was kind of an update, you know, looking at the, uh, Urban Land Institute, uh, charrette proposal, and, uh, looking at, um, the running waters, uh, for doing a... I think there was something else.
Hotel.
The hotel feasibility study, yeah, so...
We wanted to have all that included in there, and the hotel feasibility study won't be done until towards the end of June, so we wouldn't be able to integrate it in there, 'cause we're, we're dark in July, so the staff puts everything together in July, and we'll have it submitted in August and do a presentation.
Okay.
Sounds good. So, Clark, do you wanna take the next two? Not a whole lot to say, since we've covered a lot of it already.
Well, the facilities, um, Ray and I did a tour of the firehouse and, uh, gave some suggestions to staff, and I think we're gonna come back to that. Um, and also, what was the, uh, the Marina? When I look at, uh, the Marina, and this is certainly gonna be a budgetary item, so, uh, we're making some recommendations on, uh, staffing out there that we'll be coming forward on also.
Water and sewer.
Water and sewer. Yeah, water and sewer. Ray wants to raise every... No.
Hey, don't get me wrong.
No, uh, we looked actu- actually at doing a bond, uh, for capital projects and then breaking out, uh, you know, for those projects that we all toured, the ones that, uh, the three projects that were really needed, the, um, pump station up there at, uh, Glen Park, the, uh, um, communications, uh, I forget the name of it, but communications down there at the pump house, and then also the sewage line that's, uh, running right now, external on Bay Shore.
Right.
Of, uh, doing a bond for those three.
Like above ground.
Yeah, those three projects, and then breaking that bond out into, uh, capital expense on the water bill, on what it would do, and then, um, paying it over X number of years. And that would be a recommendation that would come forward on. And that's, of course, a two eighteen, uh, ballot measure. And so, trying to look at probably coming forward in, what, September, October, in that timeframe, you know, uh, where it would, uh, actually take place, I think, ju- January first, two thousand fourteen. And solid waste was tonight. All right, and that's it? I think that's it, right?
Right.
All right.
Good.
Thanks.
Um, a couple of, uh, short things under communications. Is there any more subcommittees? No?
I, I had some outside, but, but I'll do it, uh, do it later. How's our next meeting, huh?
A couple of quick things, um, under communications. I got a letter, um, there's this organization called Freedom to Marry, which they got last the mayor's, if their cities are in favor of that. And we've evidently had signed on to that, at least that's what they said last year. So, I was prepared to do that again, as long as you all are okay with it.
I'm fine with it.
Okay. All right. Uh, city selection committee, um, coming up on the seventeenth of, uh, May, which is before our next meeting. And there are two appointments, uh, for Hart Board and for Laughco. And I haven't, I don't know, Sherry, do you know of any new developments on that?
Not since, uh, today, when I sent out an email to all of you saying that Rich, uh, is it Garberino?
Yeah.
Is it Rich?
Rich.
Rich, yeah, um, is the only person who's applied for Laughco yet.
Councilmember South San Francisco.
Right.
Uh, and nobody for Hart, right?
No, but the deadline to, uh, submit an interest letter is Thursday, so that could change. But you won't have time before your next council meeting to...
So, I guess, do I have any instructions from you?
I think it's going to be the mayor's, mayor's choice if we don't have a meeting before then.
Yeah. Unless you have any inside information that we haven't heard about? No? People running or something that you know about that has been publicly announced? Yeah, okay.
You know, um, I thought Nadia Oliver said she was interested in Laughco. So, I don't know if she was appointed one, or if it was this one, or what?
That was the previous one.
Yeah.
And she did get elected.
She, yeah, Pedro took, um...
That was A bag.
Oh, that's right, I was, that's right.
And what, uh, what's happening now, I guess, is Naomi Patridge from Half Moon Bay. It's her spot, actually.
Really?
And she's still in that, uh, at Laughco.
She resigned.
And, and I guess she's resigning.
She's stepping down, yeah, she's been in it forever.
Yeah, right, so it's her position, we feel.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Do accordingly, um, the A bag report, uh, I guess, uh, John and I, I didn't see you there, Cliff, so I guess I didn't make it.
No, I didn't.
Okay, but John was there, right?
Nah, I was hoping to make it, but I couldn't.
Uh, anyway, I wanted to report that, uh, three things, very quickly. One, I actually took the ferry, 'cause it goes right from South San Francisco to Jack London Square, which is where the meeting was. So, it was absolutely perfect. Uh, so, anyway, it's...
Stay there the whole day.
Yeah, you have to stay there the whole day, but the meeting was all day, or almost all day. And I met another council member from Pacifica, and we had a good time together. Michael New.
Yeah.
And, uh, but Pedro, the mayor of South San Francisco, who's been pushing the ferry, we walk into the meeting, and the first person we see is him. And so, we say, how come you weren't on your ferry? Well, uh, you know, so, anyway, we were able to tease him up.
Yeah. On TV.
Um, the other thing, uh, the speeches in the morning, I don't wanna spend any time on that, but I, I, I do think that they're, both of the speeches were quite good. Uh, Robert Reich gave a really good talk.
Yeah, I wanted to, yeah.
Uh, and Alan Jacobs, you know, former planner of San Francisco, also gave a good talk. So, it was really good presentations. What I wanted to point out to you was that in the afternoon, they had, uh, also some workshops. One of them was presented by a company called Synthicity. And what they do is to create, uh, computer planning simulations. And it, and now, you know, they're using the old Google Earth thing. And now, they've taken all the data from the Bay Area and put it into, um, you know, their own software program, uh, and they can take you anywhere in the Bay Area, uh, and you can say, okay, I wanna do such and so, and they will input that, and they will show you what it looks like, or would look like, from any perspective, from above, from the side, from, you know, uh, from the hill looking down. I mean, it's an amazing computer simulation, absolutely. And, and it's totally realistic, I mean, it's incredible. And so, it's a brand-new company founded by a couple of Berkeley PhDs in computer science. Uh, and I was talking with both Clay and John, thinking, boy, what a fantastic planning pool. 'Cause when we start thinking about all the scenarios in the Baylands, you could just, whatever you wanna think up, you know, you can just say, okay, how about this? And there it appears, you know? Real-time board. Yeah, right. So, I said, it's amazing technology, so... Anyway, I was thinking that we might wanna consider using that, uh, in the future as a part of our planning process.
Only fifty-nine ninety-nine.
Add a few zeros.
Um, I also wanted to point out that, uh, May ninth is Bike Day, right? Uh, from six to nine AM, and they're still looking for volunteers, um...
It's Thursday?
Thursday, yeah. Uh, one thing that I'm still concerned about is that one of the main, if not the main bike routes seems to be Tunnel Avenue, which is not exactly the world's safest bike route.
That's a scary bike route.
It's very scary, but that's what they're using, uh, and, and, uh, Maynard pointed out, Susan Maynard, I guess, that, uh, we have more bikes stopped, you know, on Bike Day, you know, to pick up refreshments and stuff they give out and so forth than any other station in San Mateo County. So, we have a lot of bikers coming through. Um, anyway, uh, riding the bike is great, I'm not as sure riding it on Tunnel Avenue is great. And I'm hoping that, you know, when the Complete Streets Safety Committee gets up and running, and that's one of these I'll look at, like, you know, our bike plan.
It could be a great place to ride if it...
If we're properly fixed, yeah.
Well, as Ray pointed out, it's actually, uh, an area that is really is paved, you know, where people dump their garbage and stuff like that, but it's kinda like grown over and we've got dirt piles and gravel and stuff on it now, so... Maybe that's something, uh...
I've heard that, I've heard that it was a bike route at some point.
You can still see remnants of it, yeah.
You can still see remnants of it, yeah, right. Um, and the last thing I just wanted to report, then, I got a very nice letter from, uh, Michael Scanlon, the general manager, CEO of Samtrans, uh, thanking us for our submission and expressing pleasure that they were able to do what we...
Wanted them to do?
That is, you know, keep two hundred and two, the way it is now. And so, anyway, nice letter.
Yeah. We haven't received anything from the county, though, in, uh, our letters, so...
On the, uh, suggesting that they do affordable housing, I don't think so, no. Okay, that's all the communications I have. Um, we have one more item on the agenda, oral communications number two, and Dennis has been waiting all evening.
He has been waiting, basically. Real quick, I'm getting dirty looks. I'm just real curious, um, and it's Mrs. Miller's re- I'm here because of your wife.
Okay.
Two words.
I'll tell her.
Renovating and derelict, and the derelict really nailed me. Uh, renovating is what Cliff's taken on, and the derelict is in reference to the LT Clark property. And I've been going to the Eagles, which I've joined recently for their, uh, I don't drink anymore, but I go for the charitable things and buy Cliff a beer if he wants, or that kinda thing. But I walked and looked through the fence from the two angles. It's disgusting. I don't know which invasive species, but I'm told those trees that have gotten, is high, to the height or higher than the ceiling are acacia. Why can't we take a chainsaw in half an hour and at least knock 'em down? And looking through the side fence would be what Monterey, there's the deadest tree you could possibly imagine, it's right out of a horror movie, obviously a fire hazard. So, it got me to thinking of something Mr. Conway said about your five K race, and, uh, you'd like to run it in clay, but couldn't, or whatever it was. But I got to thinking of something, there's nothing like healthy competition.
It was me and Stuart.
Good, healthy competition. Cliff's taken on the renovation. I'd like to see someone else take on the derelict property. And I don't know if we had any say on that when the redevelopment agency funds, but as I understand it, we own it, we bought it. So, therefore, I would think we have a freer hand as what to do, at least make it attractive. You know, we talk about parks, open space, it's disgusting. It could be utilized. And Fred Smith's coming up again, I guess he's thinking of me, but years ago, Fred and I were in front of the fence at the Five Star Cafe, and I looked through, and I said to Fred, it's a crime that that beautiful redwood deck that was built by the lady that had the Five Star, I ate there all the time. She was a great character. And she built the redwood deck 'cause she was doing well, and it was a beautiful place to sit and eat and BS. And it made me think, why couldn't that be utilized? Just whack out the, I, I volunteer, there's something I can do. Uh, and make it a community project, a challenge, you know, Randy's gang against your gang. Uh, keep it within, I just think it's worth looking into, but your wife brought up the word derelict, and it should've never happened, ever. Somebody could've taken a chopper before those acacias could pop through the ceiling. So, anyway, I don't know what control we have over it, but I'd like to see the derelict become renovation, and that's it. Have a pleasant evening.
Okay, thank you very much.
Good night.
Uh, you're right, though, we do have control over that property now. And, uh, those things you suggest make a lot of sense, so we'll look at it right away. Uh, anything else for the good of the order, as they say?
I make a motion to adjourn.
All right.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Wow.
Hey, look at that!
I thought, I thought the motion was ten forty-five.